Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the regular June 6, 2013, meeting of the Olathe District Schools Board of Education. Ms. Hibbs, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Ashley?
Here.
Dr. Daniels?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Polan?
Here.
Mr. Shear?
Here.
Would everyone rise for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have one presentation this evening. It will be on the Middle School Technical Education Program. And it looks like Mrs. Hermak is going to lead us tonight.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Our teaching and learning focus tonight highlights middle school technical education elective coursework. After a year, or actually a decade, of implementation with our current resources, our curriculum and revision cycle launched this past year, a year-long study of updated resources that would meet the needs of our students and impact learning. We know that middle school education is a time that our students get a chance to explore and broaden their course interests and learning interests with elective course choices for the first time. What we need to provide with our curriculum is an opportunity to meet wide variety of student learning needs and interests. And also, the coursework we offer in the middle school also paves the way for future course interests that they would pursue in high school. Our middle school tech curriculum is actually delivered solely through the use of technology with an instructor trained to and leading students to implement a project-based curriculum. Very exciting for our students. We appreciate the opportunity tonight to highlight this middle school tech ed coursework through a variety of perspectives. Mrs. Denise Griffey will talk about it from the educational technical ed coordination for the district, career tech ed. Jeff Lafflin is an instructor at Oregon Trail. And Dr. Stacy Yurkovich provides the principal perspective from Prairie Tech. Mrs. Griffey.
Now, I would like you to go on a journey with me, back to the time when you were in junior high or high school, and think about the shop or the tech ed programs. What did the classes look like? What students were in the class? And what type of activities were they working on? Well, we all have our stories, and they're very memorable from our school experience, and I would like to share one with you tonight. It was the spring of my sophomore year, and I was making my course selection for the following year. I was looking over my elective course options, and I thought drafting would be an interesting course. Well, when I went to talk to my guidance counselor and tell him that I wanted to take the drafting course, he told me, "Girls don't take that class." And so with that, I ended up that, okay, I didn't take that answer. I followed up, and I asked a few questions. And I said, "Well, why can't girls take that class?" And a couple of things I heard is that girls just don't do that class. Also, there are no girls' restrooms in that building. In my time, the shop or drafting class ended up to be in the bus barn. The bus barn was across the street from the high school. And for some reason, there was this invisible line between those two buildings, and the girls did not cross that line. Well, with a little problem solving from a counselor and my mother, this problem was resolved and decided that girls could take the class. In the eyes of the 16-year-old, crisis averted. As my high school yearbook referenced, history was made, and the liberation movement rolled into the shop program. The exciting part of my story is that the shop and the tech ed classroom today looks significantly different from that. And what we'd like to do right now is show you a little video clip of our classroom that's actively engaged.
There's something going on in this classroom that has students fired up.
It's life-changing.
Fantastic. My first day in here was like, wow.
Educators are energized.
It's excitement in education.
And the sponsors of the classroom are thinking about the future.
It's an investment in the people that we need in our business in the future.
Synergistic modules are a revolutionary new method for teaching at the middle-level grades. Students work in pairs at a workstation called a module that contains everything they need for standards-based, hands-on learning. Each workstation is outfitted with a multimedia curriculum delivered on the module's networked computer. Module curriculum is completed in seven class sessions, after which students move to a new module to learn new content with a new partner.
As shown in the video, students are actively engaged with the curriculum. Our Olathe students are able to engage with this curriculum in our Technology 6 and our Exploration in Technology courses. Here is a list of a summary of the key concepts that students study in that class. You will hear more detail later from Stacy in our presentation about these concepts. These courses also provide students with the opportunity to explore topics, and this is a list of the topics, and they range from communication to electronics to robots. To provide additional detail about these modules, Jeff will share with you some of his classroom experiences.
Good thing about being in the classroom is you constantly get to hear the phrases, "Oh, yeah." This is where this is actually put into use. Could be from the ratios to fractions to just like the Pythagorean theorem, or just basic triangles and shapes. Just in the pictures that are offered up there in front of us, the kids are actually going through and working with the angles of reflection to actually still cook a hot dog. Or it could be the fact that they're working in pairs to go through and create, well, to create a creative solution, where they're going to go through and solve problems. In the picture on the left, the students are actually going through and using the design process that they actually use in the auto industry. Instead of taking seven years, they just dwindle it down to seven days. They go through and make thumbnail sketches, rough sketches, finished drawings. And then they actually get to go through and produce their own dragster and actually go ahead and race it against head-to-head competition. On the picture on the right, the kids are actually using a robotic lunar rover. The great part about this program is it's all hands-on. You get to see them exploring, learning, just following through with the stuff that they're taught in their core classes each and every day in this class.
As a middle school administrator, I've seen the change take place from the narrow focus of the traditional woodshop and metals to technical education. Over time, this program has benefited thousands of students in Olathe, all types of students and learning styles. For those who are kinesthetic learners, the hands-on style of learning is a perfect fit. Audio instruction meets the needs of audio learners and enhances, provides enhancement for the visual learners as well. The tech ed courses appeal to students all along the continuum of academic skills as well. The modules have a direct correlation to STEM careers for students interested in science, technology, engineering, and math fields. Developmentally, middle school students need physical activity, and they thrive on social interaction for their learning. In this program, they're provided both. Modules are completed in pairs or teams, involve hands-on learning, integrated into the use of technology, and students rotate modules every seven to 10 days. Inquiry and problem-solving are at the core of each module, which challenges the learner and provides opportunity to apply the learning to real-world situations. The learning is meaningful and immediately offers relevance to the learner, which addresses another developmental need for the middle school student and answers questions we often hear at the middle school. How does this apply to me? And when am I ever going to use this? During the time that tech ed has been implemented at the middle level, the curriculum strongly supported the math reading and science state standards and indicators. And of course, now we're experiencing that shift to Kansas College and Career Ready standards. Although those standards look different, the program continues to address and support them. Academic preparation is supported through the STEM strands that we've already talked about. Cognitive preparation through problem-solving and application of knowledge. Technical skills are the basis for each of the modules, and employability skills are addressed through working with others, time management, and career explorations. In addition, the technology modules provide a basis and connection to 21st century high school programs such as aerospace and engineering and e-communications. The video provided a snapshot of the opportunities offered through tech ed. On behalf of middle school principals and tech ed teachers, I invite you to visit any of our schools to see our kids and our teachers in action. And related to Denise's comment, you'll see a lot of female students in the class, and at Prairie Trail, a female teacher. Thank you for the opportunity, and we would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is this an elective for the students at the middle school? And is there a limit on how many modules they can take, or is it whatever they can fit into their schedule?
Good question. It is an elective course for 6th grade. 6th grade is a quarter course, so they would finish probably two to three, perhaps, modules, up to four during that time. And then, the capacity on the class would be, all of the modules would be completed in 7th grade within that semester course. So there would be approximately 12 modules that they would have the opportunity to complete within that course.
So each module, then, is just a week or two?
Seven days.
Do we track these students? Do a lot of them go on to take 21st century programs in STEM?
You know, that's been a good question, and Denise has worked on some of those figures, and we could certainly pull those together for you.
I'd just be curious to see the students who are in it now, what exposure they had at the middle level.
Yes. We do have figures, Mrs. Martin, on the students choosing to take it from 6th to 7th grade years, so we could also pull those figures for you, because that's also an interesting sort of picture for our students. So we'd be glad to do that.
Thank you.
What is the overall enrollment? Are most of the classes full?
Well, I'll let Stacy refer to that.
You know, yes, they are full. And of course, because of the nature of the class and the limited modules, there's a capacity, a limit, in the class. And it's a little smaller in 6th grade than it is actually in the 7th and 8th grade class. When we were preparing for this, and Jeff and I were talking, we have one classroom equipped. But if that were not a limitation, if we could equip more than one classroom, I think we could fill probably two, at least two, teachers' full-time schedules. It's a very popular class with kids, yes.
Other questions? All right, well, thank you very much. We will move on with the agenda this evening. Previously, we had listed, under our consent agenda, seven items. We've added an eighth tonight. It was presented as a future action item last month. It's a student trip. Board members have been made aware of that. So when we make our motion tonight, I'd appreciate 5.01 through 5.08. Having said that, are there any items on this list that board members would like to consider for questions or individual consideration? Then I would entertain a motion.
Just one point of order, Ms. Martin. The item that was left off is really an action item, 8.14, not on the consent agenda.
It was listed as a future action item last month as 8.14.
Got it, okay. So it is considered a consent item, then?
Yes.
Okay. I would move for approval for the consent agenda, the items 6.01 through 6.0...
I think you mean 5.01.
Yeah, 5.01, yep, through 5.0...
Eight.
Eight. Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Mr. Parker and a second by Mr. Polan. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mrs. Felter, she's not here, I'm sorry. Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Motion carries. Under our action items, 6.01 is our athletic trainer agreement with Olathe Medical Center. Are there any questions or comments? Then I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the 2013-14 agreement for athletic trainers with the Olathe Medical Center as presented.
Second. Since I have a motion by Dr. Daniels and a second by Ms. Ashley, would you call the roll?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6.02, our salary reimbursement agreement with Kids TLC. Questions or comments? Then a motion.
I move that we approve the 2013-14 salary reimbursement agreement with Kids TLC as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Ms. Ashley and a second by Mr. Parker. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Are we going in random order tonight? It's throwing me off a little bit. 6.03, our general insurance policy renewal. Questions or comments?
We actually have some information that can be presented, and then people who can help answer questions at that time.
Excellent, thank you.
So I believe Merle Hastert will come.
Well, good evening, and thanks for having us this evening. If I remember at this time last year, as we began to present our information on our insurance renewal and our premiums for the next year, our instructions were, "Let's skip the formalities and the introductions. Let's get right to the meat and potatoes." So tonight, the premium renewals seem to be just as exciting as last year. So we're going to step back a little bit, and Bob Charlesworth has joined us this evening. He's going to present some information from some processes that we've gone through this spring in recommending to you our premium renewals. I'll be here. Denise Carpenter will be joining us on the workers' comp side, and when Bob finishes his presentation, we'll all be here for questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. What we did this year is we put together a summary request for proposal information, sent it to some brokers that we felt had some expertise in school districts and had market availability for large property, as well as large retention deductible programs in the liability area. Went out and received really two full proposals back. One through CBIZ. There was a letter, I believe, in your document that said they had a market they felt was going to be excellent, but the concentration of values of locations was too great for their underwriter at this time. The other one we got back through Crutchell-Hartland. It's a very nice brokerage firm here in Kansas City. What they have done is they put together a program through Lloyd's, and then they also put together a not-admitted carrier of liability. So we at least had some apples-and-apples comparisons to look at. Are our rates competitive? Are our values competitive? Are our deductibles competitive, et cetera? So through the process, we've learned quite a bit, actually, as a district, on our valuation process and things we could improve on as we move forward, which was helpful. Crutchell-Hartland actually had some unique ideas within their agency, being able to do maybe some monitoring of certificates of insurance for new construction, facility use, and stuff like that. We have a lot of different parts moving here in the district. So that's something to be cognizant of moving forward. But this year, we were focusing on the product. And one of the issues last year that I was not happy with was the carrier that has your current property program offered a larger wind hail deductible, more than I would have liked to have seen. And this year, bottom line was, is that that was fairly typical of the other quote that we received. We have $100,000 deductible that we had to buy down to. The quote was for $500,000 for wind hail, which would include tornado. Everything else was $100,000 deductible. So at least we saw those premiums. But the one carrier wanted our values much higher than where we have them today. Probably somewhere where we have them and where they were wanting is kind of where we need to be and work toward. So I think that was a goal that we need to understand and work toward, which is fine. But bottom line is, is that there's a couple of things on our plate today that we've proposed that you all consider. One of them is, like we have done this year, we're suggesting that we, first of all, renew a Travelers Insurance Company with buying down the wind hail deductible for $500,000 to $100,000. Now, that is a separate limit, a separate deductible that would erode if we had multiple events, but it's per occurrence. And we recommend doing that. It's about $35,500, it's the same amount as it was last year. The other issue is what we've done, we've actually gone through and have taken some scenarios, and they're not perfect. But what we have done is I actually put together three different scenarios on what we call a loss limit, because our policy has what we call a $400 million loss limit. It's per occurrence. So the worst-case scenario is $400 million. That's the most insurance company will ever pay in any one occurrence. So the question begets is, well, where is our stuff at? And what could be taken out in one fell swoop? And in the last two years, as you have known, we've had a horrible loss in Joplin about two years ago now. Recently, we had one in Moore, Oklahoma, which is where I was first living, my wife and I were first married. The place still stands after two tornadoes, believe it or not. But it gets concerning. So what we did is we actually took a model of the tornado of Joplin and mapped it out over the district's program, and gone through what is our worst-case scenario. And, folks, it's scary. We have concentration of values here in Olathe, neighborhood schools. It's wonderful for our district, but we have a lot of stuff. And so we're going through all this, and we're looking at, you know, the worst case, you know, could it be, we have about $83 to $100 million sitting on this corner right here, folks. You take the path that it took in Joplin. If it started at ODAC and moved this way, took out of Olathe South, some elementary schools, we're going to probably over $300 million in one fell swoop. We're currently at $400 million. What we do have as an option today is we have an option to move that to $500 million. And the premium is $35,000 for that as well. We are recommending that we do that, based on the concentration of values and just the risk that we could have. We think it's very prudent to do that. So that was one area. The other area was the liability. Actually, we have a $200,000 deductible essentially on the liability. We've had that for several years. We like that because it's what we call a self-insured retention, which actually gives the right of the district to really manage their claim from dollar one, instead of hanging it off to an insurance company to manage it and maybe sell it when you might not have wanted to settle it. So it's legal liability. We had that large deductible. But actually, the premium went down, which I haven't seen in a liability program. So thanks to Thomas McGee for being the broker on that and being very aggressive at getting that price for us. And so that's one of the issues we're looking at. Of course, along with that, we need an independent third-party administrator to handle those claims of which we can't handle as a district. Usually, they involve large property or bodily injury-type claims. We do not want to get into the claim handling business of that. So we hire a third party, and Thomas McGee does that. And as you can see, the estimated cost for that's about $8,415 a year. The other answer lines are, we really don't want to touch the crime, which is employee dishonesty. That went up just a little bit in premium. And then we have a fiduciary liability through Chubb. We actually pick folks that handle our employees' money, so we actually have a fiduciary responsibility for that. And as you can see, that went from $2,500 to $2,750 for an annual premium. So collectively, on the property and liability program, we were very pleased with Thomas McGee coming back with a very strong program within incumbent. I was very pleased with Crutchell-Hartland coming back with, obviously, something to compare with was, I thought, was important. But also, services that a broker can bring and some answer to things that we might look at in the future. But collectively, what we're looking at today is the product. And bottom line is this, in a nutshell. Renewal with Travelers on the property program, increasing the loss limit to $500 million per loss. Also, buying the deductible buy-down from $500,000 to $100,000 for wind hail. Accepting the liability program with Genesis with a $200,000 retention. Accepting the third-party administration fee with Thomas McGee for $8,415 estimated, because it's based on the annual occurrences of claims. Looking at crime, again, for $57.29, and fiduciary liability for $2,750. So kind of as an entire package, property and liability, that's what we're recommending the district consider for this year.
Thank you. Board members, questions? I have a question about where do we go in the future with the increasing occurrence of severe weather? And I am asking you to pull out your crystal ball and offer some suggestions.
Well, Ms. Ashley, that's a good question, and it's a tough one to answer. The easiest answer from a risk manager's point of view, if you want to pull out a textbook, and I like teaching risk management, not textbook risk management, though, you don't build buildings close to each other. You spread the risk. But that doesn't serve the community very well sometimes. So sometimes, the best book is not necessarily the best on paper. Spreading the concentration of values, obviously, is a big deal. The construction itself is huge. Obviously, the construction that the district has is excellent. The extra money that you all have through bonds, through updates and stuff like that is huge. I think the strong construction that you have is probably the biggest key for damages. Obviously, if a tornado hits it, it's going to hit it. There's not much you can do that. But for all the others, we have very few property losses in this district. And the muscles we have, the service center does a phenomenal job getting them back up and running. So I don't have a good answer for you on that. I think just the spreading of risk, watching the concentration of values at any one location. And, you know, we have a builder's risk program right now that's part of our program. Probably ought to talk about that. You know, we have automatic coverage for buildings that we have, we do additions to. There's automatic coverage for that. At least quarterly, I know the Thomas McGee, folks at Thomas McGee, the brokerage firm, visit with Merle and get a quarterly update on all projects going on. So that builder's risk is always updated. And we have some automatic coverage provisions on the property policy for new construction. If we happen to miss a timing of 20 or 30, or actually, we have 90 days, I think, or maybe 120 on your policy. We have 120 days on your policy. So we have a million dollars of automatic coverage, and that's still just getting groundwork done, stuff being brought on-site. So we have a lot of good things going within our insurance policy as we continue to grow as a district. I probably didn't answer your question specifically, but...
It was helpful. Thank you.
You bet.
I think it would be important for the public to understand that, you know, the extra, and our staff as well, because this comes out of our general fund. And so when you look at the extra $35,000 for the extra $100 million of coverage on our cap, and also the extra $400,000 in our deductible, that's $70,000. But we're buying $100 million, $400,000 worth of coverage for $70,000. And that makes Mr. Hutchison feel really good.
It makes Bob Charlesworth feel very well, too, by the way.
Because those losses, if our losses were greater than our insurance, or the $400, if we had one occurrence and it was a million-dollar loss, and we had to come up with an extra $400,000, again, that comes out of our general fund. And again, that's teacher salaries, and that's classroom instruction. So this $70,000 is money that is very well spent, and it's good protection for the district.
I agree.
And I think it's also important for the public to understand, and our teachers as well, that the other bid that we got, you asked two brokers, CBIZ, who declined to even offer a bid. They didn't have a market. In other words, they didn't have any... They didn't have a market, in other words, they didn't have any carrier that wanted to write our policy. So they passed entirely. And then the bid we got from Creacher Heartland was 992,000. And our package now is 700,000 and change. So even though we bid it, they were 270,000 more than what we're currently paying. So again, the public and our teachers can understand that we've done due diligence on this, and we've gotten the best product at the best price.
We have a very good product. This year, we were focusing on the product, and I'm very happy with the product the district has right now.
Yeah, and Mr. Shear and I were in the committee, and it's difficult for us to spend that $35,000 for that 400,000 of coverage. But that's per occurrence, and if we had two occurrences, that's $800,000. So again, we believe that it'd be, no, it's our recommendation that we would go ahead and accept that and buy that wind hail deductible down to 100,000 rather than being 500,000 for the $35,000 a premium.
That is correct.
Okay. And I just want everybody to understand what our thinking on that is and that we're just not spending $35,000 here willy-nilly, so.
Not at all. In fact, after my review of information, I just get very uncomfortable where we're at today. The extra 100 million, to me, is extremely important for the district to consider especially.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, we would look a $100 million foolish if we didn't spend that $35,000 for that additional $100 million.
Mr. Parker, I don't like giving insurance companies a dollar. So but to me, you know, to me, you know, based on, and especially for what Creacher Heartland provided us, they had an $800 million loss limit. Now, it's a different, it's kind of a pool program. They had different silos for different entities, which they have. Very good concept, but it's, you know, we need to probably get the values up a little bit. Their actually rate per hundred was higher than where we're at today. We have competitive product.
Right.
Dr. Barrett, I don't remember ever seeing a presentation on our risk management program. We may have, but I'd like some information on that sometime.
Sure.
Then I would move to accept the fiscal year 2013-14 quotes for property liability, wind hail deductible, buy down, general liability, TPA services, crime liability and fiduciary liability as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibs, I have a motion by Mr. Parker and a second by Mr. Shear. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Motion carries 6.04, our workers' compensation excess insurance policy and third-party administrator contract. Mr. Charlesworth is still there, so I assume you have something else to present.
Just one quick item on this. The two pieces, as you mentioned, Mrs. Martin. The first one is the stop-loss and insurance that we do purchase as a district. Currently, we're at $350,000 per accident. The premium of that came back, went up fairly well. You may remember last year, I gave you all kudos for buying a two-year rate, and that expired unfortunately. So now it's time to kind of get back caught up a little bit. But in reality, what we're looking at is moving that to a $400,000 per accident retention. And this actually gives us a two-year program, knowing the rate for the renewal as well as the rate for the next year. And I have not seen that before. So that's a very good, it's with Safety National, that's our current stop-loss carrier. We have approval from the state to do this already. The board so chooses to move up, you have to get their approval for these issues. Ed Treadwell from Thomas McGee's already got that approval from them if you all move to go this way. Based on our loss history, we have only had one claim, and that was in 2003. Is that right? 2003, that's been over 300,000, and that hasn't been fully paid yet. Some of that's in reserve. So yes, it's a risk, but it's also per accident, not per individual. So we're recommending, it's based on the premium, to save the premium there and move to that new retention level. And also renew the contract with Thomas McGee. It is up a little bit. They asked for rating, premium or fee increase. They haven't had a rating fee increase in three years, and I think it's due.
Comments or questions?
So again, basically, what we're saying here is that currently, Mr. Charlesworth calls it a stop-loss deductible. Basically, it's our deductible on work comp of 350,000. So we're recommending to raise that deductible to 400,000. He's saying, now, wait a minute, we just spent 70,000 to buy more insurance, and now this, that 50,000, we saved $16,000 worth of premium. So by going to 400,000, we save 16,000. And our loss exposure on that is, as Mr. Charlesworth mentioned, one claim in the last 10 years has been greater than 300,000. I don't think we've ever, have we ever gone over the 350? So we've never gone over, so there, that's a good buy on our part. We're buying, we're basically, we're giving up 50,000 worth of coverage for 16,000, and that's like a three-year payback on that.
And a second-year known rate on our stop-loss is a good deal.
So we're getting back 16,000, and that's 70,000.
First year.
First year.
Yeah, and to address Mr. Poland's comment a minute ago by risk management, I actually do attend the monthly meetings, the safety committee meetings for the district. They're very spirited. We go to different locations all the time. We actually, well, that's a good thing to say. We actually get to tour it, and we get to meet the folks there, both the safety rep there as well as the custodial staff, because they're there every day, we're not. And it's really good to see and be seen, and the committee gets to see the building. And so when we talk about things that happen, they can say, I remember what that facility looks like. And they're not that long, but they're very, I think they're very impactful.
And again, to speak to that, our safety record, if you look at our rate per thousand, that .0437, that's unheard of.
That's good.
Yeah, that's really good. And if we went to the open market with that, that would double if we were not self-insured. So speaking about the self-insured part of that, we talked a little bit about this last year, and it's something that we kind of scooted under the rug, but it's something that we need to be aware of, and that is how we're reserved in our work comp self-insured pool. And we keep that pretty slender. Actuarially, it probably is not right if we were looking at actuarially, but it works because of our good loss, our good risk management. But if we had a couple of big claims, we would, might find ourselves in a situation where we would have to put some more money in our reserve fund out of the general fund on a transfer. So this year, when we do transfers, if there's any money left over, we should think about trying to transfer a little bit extra money into our work comp reserve because that needs a little bit of help. It's not in dire straits, but it's on the edge.
Mr. Charles, do you have, with that in mind, self-insuring, do you have that number off the top of your head, what we would be paying as a premium if we didn't self-insure?
It's going to be a ballpark, but my last time I did it was like 994,000 a year. So it's around a million dollars a year if we had to go out and write a check for it every year.
And so again, these are the things that the board continues to try to do and look at different levers of being able to save the taxpayers' money, and this is just one of those options for us right now.
And really, you know, the district employees themselves, they understand it's district money at the annual in-service that we have. It always, Denise does a wonderful job of going over, these are our dollars as a district. We're responsible for our patrons. And they understand that. And the return to work is great. The staff with Denise, they get people back when they're in need to. And the folks, your employees out there, trying to accommodate the best they can to get them back, because we want them at work.
Right. This is all the teamwork. This is everybody from the worker to the people that are injured and getting them all back is the one that's saving us almost a million dollars a year.
Absolutely. I think it's huge.
Then our limit per claim is the million over and above the 300, the 400,000?
No, actually...
Is statutory then?
Whatever the statute has, that's what it is.
That's what their carrier would, Safety National would pay then?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Basically, Safety National should really love us because they haven't paid a claim in years, have they?
They have not.
It's why our premium is so low.
Yeah, exactly right. Maybe on the East Coast, they might not like that statement so well, but...
Yeah. But it's good to have that backup, knowing that if you got that big one, you're not going to have to go to the general fund to fund a million dollar claim of unfortunate fatality or something of that nature.
And with the statutory benefit, I'm not sure the state would allow you to go without something.
Right. Okay.
Are we ready for a motion?
I'd move to approve the 2013-2014 workers' compensation excess insurance renewal and third-party administrator contract for workers' compensation administration as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibs, I have a motion by Mr. Poland and a second by Mr. Shear. Would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Motion carries 6.05, furniture bids for our elementary renovations. Comments or questions? Then I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the furniture bids for the four elementary renovations as presented.
Second. Ms. Hibs, I have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Ms. Ashley. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
The motion carries 6.06, trade bids for the technology support center and food production center additions. Comments or questions? Then I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the bids listed in the bid summary and reject the food service equipment bids as presented.
Ms. Hibs, I have a motion by Mr. Parker and a second by Mr. Shear. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
So when does the work begin?
We're ready. They'll be there right away, instantly.
6.07, our milk-based products and juice bids. Comments or questions?
I move to approve the escalating pricing option offered by Highland Dairy for milk-based products and 100% juice products as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibs, I have a motion by Dr. Daniels and a second by Mr. Poland. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries 6.08, Apple iPad purchase. Comments or questions?
Can we get a little bit of an update of, because this is the second phase of, this is the second one, talk a little bit about how it's been accepted, how we're using them now, how well is it working?
So which part of that do you want me to start with?
Just an overall executive summary of it, because this is neat technology for us. And this is something that the kids have at home. It's nice that we're finally getting into the school. So I just want to kind of have a reinforcement of it from that standpoint.
Phase one kind of wrapped up this spring when we had presentations by several of the groups that had received the iPads. And they were really kind of scattered across the district, across grade levels, across curriculums. We had quite a few at ELL. Jan Heinand is here. If you have any questions on how that worked at ELL, I know she has some very positive things. We got great things back from ELL, from SPED. We had them in high school PE. We had them at primary grade levels, and we just had a great response from all of the people that presented. Didn't really come up with one area that was really a driving force to us that said, wow, that had the biggest impact, for example, in ELL, and that's where we should go with all of these. They were really so broad across the spectrum that we really wanted to just continue to allow buildings to purchase as they saw a need for it in their buildings with their building funds. So that's kind of where phase two is going. A few less iPads than we had with phase one. Phase one also included iPads for district administrations, so that kind of increased those numbers a little bit. But I think in some respects, people were kind of a little bit reluctant to spend a whole lot of money with iPads right now, hoping that our bond passes and we have a more focused influx of technology at all the grade levels. So this is just kind of a continuation. They're really spread again across all curricular levels. I can tell you that a large majority of them are really going into the hands of students. But again, just, it's been successful. It's been very well received, a lot of people wanting more and more and more, and we really hope to give them that in the future.
How are they holding up, especially in the classroom? Are we having very many damaged?
You know, we buy Apple Care Plus with the iPad. It covers accidental damage twice on each machine. We have probably only had to send back maybe 10 to 12 of the 400 that were purchased in phase one. We also buy a pretty heavy-duty case for the iPads that go into the students' hands. They're called an Otter Box, if you know anything about those. The case really protects the iPad, and we've really had very little loss. Actually, I was a little bit surprised that it's as low as it's been, but it's been very good. People are very respectful. They're very excited to get them, so they want to make sure they take good care of them.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would, to approve the purchase of 290 iPads from Apple Inc. for 132,820. Second.
Ms. Hibs, I have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Mr. Poland. Would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
The motion carries, I would like to stop where we are right now, take our comfort break. I would invite everyone to go out to the lobby where we will be having a reception for Ms. Ashley punching cookies out there. You can go out and wish her well, and then we'll be back here at 7 o'clock. We have a full room tonight, so if you guys all want to kind of scooch this way, we'll make some more room at the door for everyone to filter in. Next on our agenda, we do our awards and recognitions. And tonight, Dr. Erin Dugan and Mr. Rick Shear are going to be assisting with that.
Good evening, everyone. We are a packed room, but welcome. We're very excited. We have some wonderful recognitions to share with our Board of Education and our distinguished guests here this evening. I want to begin our recognitions tonight with a valued business partner. I'd like to ask Heather Schoonover from Community Development and Cindy Von Felth from the Olathe Public Schools Foundation to head forward to help us with this recognition. In addition, I'd like to ask Lori Minard and Nikki Thomas, both representing Garmin, to also come forward. Tonight, we recognize Garmin, who brings innovative opportunities to Olathe Public Schools. Let me highlight just a few of the many ways Garmin supports our district. Garmin has provided student internship opportunities, mentored students, provided guest presenters, provided workplace expiration tours, which means they let us go over and look at the Garmin building, which is awesome. They've partnered with our adopted school program, both at Indian Trail and our summer enrichment program at Santa Fe Trail. Huge contributor to Olathe Public Schools Foundation, supporting Rachel's Challenge, Teachers Excellence Grants, the Classified Staff Recognition Program, and has also provided leadership on the Board of Directors for the foundation, and we're thrilled for that.[1701.01] Tonight, we recognize the Garmin team that has been instrumental to the partnership with our school district. Lori Minard is here, Vice President of Human Resources at Garmin, and Nikki Thomas, College Relations Recruiter. It's a great title. So on behalf of the school district, thank you to Garmin and you guys specifically for all you do and all you partner with us. We appreciate you. I'm going to change order up here a little bit to accommodate some schedules, but for our next recognition, we ask that Vanya Shivashankar, along with her principal Connie Vibrok, head forward. Vanya, you are already famous by the crowd and the clapping, but let me tell someone that maybe didn't catch this breaking news, but Vanya is a sixth grader at California Trail. She has just returned from the '86 Annual Script Spelling Bee, which was held last week in National Harbor, Maryland. At the National Bee, Vanya was nothing short of spectacular, making it to the nationally televised finals on ESPN, where she tied fifth in the nation. Vanya earned the right to compete at the National Spelling Bee for the third time after winning the qualifying spelling bee sponsored here in Alitha by the Alitha News. Congratulations to Vanya for her ongoing success, both locally and at the National Spelling Bees. Your talent and absolute happy spirit makes us incredibly proud here in the Alitha School District. We give her and any winner of our local spelling bee, it's 1928, dictionary. Vanya, I want, if you can, let me know who's here, let us know who's here from your family, and so we can recognize them and all their support. Thank you, Vanya. Next, I'd like to recognize Sunnyside Elementary School. An asset David Kearney, principal of Sunnyside Marvel Lee Collins, Sunnyside School Counselor, and Larry Katsev, who has facilitated our, quote, "K-12 counseling program," to please come forward. Sunnyside Elementary was awarded the Standard of Excellence Award for the 2012-2013 school year by the Kansas State Department of Education. This award recognizes Sunnyside for demonstrating a high degree of alignment with the Kansas comprehensive school counseling model and the multi-tiered system of support in their school counseling program. In addition, Sunnyside was one of just a few of the schools in the state of Kansas to receive the 2013 Spotlight Award from the Kansas Department of Education. The Spotlight Award is recognizing schools who achieve the state's social, emotional, and character development standards. A huge congratulations to Sunnyside Elementary. We're in a recognizing counseling mode, so next we want to recognize the school counselor at Ravenwood Elementary School. We ask that Karen Thompson, counselor at Ravenwood, to come up to the front and bring with her Ravenwood Principal Jim Brockway, and also Larry Katsev is going to stay put up front. Karen Thompson was the district nominee for the 2012-2013 School Counselor of the Year and was the finalist for the Kansas School Counselor of the Year Award by the Kansas School Counselor Association. Congratulations, Karen, and thank you for all that you do for students and families both at Ravenwood and throughout our school district. A huge thank you. And let us know, family members in the audience you can recognize?
My best friend and my husband is.
Well, there you go. Awesome. Congratulations. Thank you. Get ready for students. Here we go. Culinary, very exciting. We'd like to now recognize the district's culinary program. An asset Connie Neiman, Patty McWilliams, and the members of the Alitha North culinary team. Please come forward, along with Alitha North Principal David Morford and Kathy Musgrave, our Career and Technical Education Administrator. For the eighth, and I think I have that right, eighth year in a row, our culinary team swept the culinary competition at the Kansas State Pro-Start Competition, and for the fifth year in a row, represent the state of Kansas at the National Pro-Start Competition. The team took fourth place at national competition. Additionally, the management team took first in the state of Kansas and 12th at the national competition. Members of the culinary team, Dylan MacGaster, Jose Hernandez, Kayla Daniels, Morgan Gibbs, and members of the management team, Gabrielle Van Hout, Kayla Vermullen, sorry, Olivia Glover, and Cody Kaufman. Is Kayla here? Say your last name. Close. I gave it a couple extra pieces. We're thrilled you're here. Chef Mike, who we typically bring up, and so folks that are used to this, is not here this evening. He is in Moore, Oklahoma, and he is cooking for a leaf worker, so we're thrilled he's there and miss him here tonight, though. Congratulations to the Alitha culinary program. Your ongoing success at state and national competition makes us incredibly proud. Again, if you're a family member in the audience, for any one of these lovely people, stand up and give us a chance to recognize you. Thank you. Alitha North shouldn't go too far. The Alitha North Science Olympiad team experienced tremendous success this year, and we'd now like to recognize them. Would the members of the team please come forward, along with Coach Sherri Hansen, and again, Principal David Morford, and Activities Director Chad Breckhizen. Alitha North won the state championship at the State Science Olympiad Tournament in Wichita, Kansas this spring. As a result, they attended the national competition at Wright State University in Dayton, Ohio in May. The members of the team who won an award at Nationals are, and give me a little wave, and I'll apologize in advance on any names. Gregory Bixler won a sixth-place medal in rocks and minerals. Thanks, Gregory. Christoph Kinzel won a fifth-place medal in material science. Drew Broadbent won a fifth-place medal in material science and a sixth-place medal in rocks and materials. Other members of the team, and incredibly important, so wave if I call your name as well. Alexandria Fiskus, Andrew Johansson, Annalise Kohler, Mark LaFlette, that can't be right, Brendan Porter, Kavya Shivashankar, Timothy Weber, Michael Johnson, Natasha Graham, Marissa Madira, David Nelson, Mark Vreblek, Cooper Yerby, Desha Desgupta, Roshan Basaria, Griffin Carr. Congratulations to all the members of the Alitha North Science Olympiad team. Again, if you're a family or just a proud fan of any of these folks, stand up and let us recognize you. From Science Olympiad to bowling, we're now going to want to recognize an outstanding member of the Alitha Northwest Bowling Team. I ask that Mackenzie Solnier and Assistant Bowling Coach Kristen Potter, please come forward with Dr. Gwen Pass, who looks a lot like Jay Novacek, Assistant Principal at Alitha Northwest High School. This is a great story. This year, Mackenzie Solnier, a sophomore at Northwest, won the Kansas State Bowling Title with a 707 series. Mackenzie won the competition by 44 pins over the second-place finisher, by grabbing control of the competition with a 266 in her second game. It's important to note, at the regional completion, Mackenzie took first place, get ready, with an 804 series, with scores of 234, 290, and 280. We're just all going to pause on that in a moment. A huge congratulations to Mackenzie on this outstanding postseason performance. Introduce, if you can, some proud family members. Sorry, Gwen. State softball. Let's now recognize the 2013 state champions in softball. I ask that the Alitha East softball team, including Head Coach Jeff Holz and Assistant Principal Ryan Ralston, come to the front of the room. It's a bunch of chatty high school girls, but I'm going to interrupt them for a minute and maybe do the... You may recognize, actually, our audience, recognize some of these girls, and for a good reason. This represents the second state championship in a row, so for some of them, they were here probably about this time last year. This also represents the eighth softball championship for Alitha East since the school opened in 1992. And also, this contenders Alitha's dominance in softball, with district high schools winning the state championship four of the last five years and seven out of the last 10 years. Additionally, softball is the only sport that all four high schools have won a state championship. Also, kind of breaking news, Allison Stewart, here, wave.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there, that's Allison. Busy chatting. Just named the Gatorade Player of the Year for the state of Kansas, so a special shout out. Girls, I'm going to attempt to call out your name, and you're going to do that super softball wave so the audience can recognize. So members of the team include Elizabeth Leonard, Maddie Augustine, Kelsey, I won't get it right, Gertsema, close, Greer Hartman, Bailey Ward, Taylor Officer, Kaylee Byers, Kennedy Poro, Taylor Vickers, Amber Halburton, Jenny Brooks, McKenna Davis, Allison Stewart, Emily Voight, and Sadie Wooten. Wooten, Wooten. Woo, woo, Wooten, that's it. The student managers are Lee Thomas and Kelly Carney. The assistant coaches are Stan Sperlin, Shelley Shaw, and Sarah Batchlet. Head coach is Jeff Holz. And Jeff, you're going to introduce someone else that I didn't list.
This is Ryan Ralston, Administrator for ALitha East.
Awesome. Good, thank you very much. Congratulations to Alitha East Hawks, Kansas State Champions again. And let's recognize any family that's out there. Please stand up and let us clap for you guys. Our final and very important recognitions for this evening, I want to recognize all of our state champions in track and field. We would like all the student athletes and their coaches who won a state championship in an individual event at the state track and field meet to come forward, along with the following principals and their athletic directors. Ryan Ralston from Alitha East, David Morford from Alitha North, Jay Novacek from Northwest, Phil Clark and Robert Kersey from Alitha South.
Hello, sir.
We had a number of track and field individual state champions, as you can see, and Anne's going to have a great time trying to get them all in a picture, so they can already start thinking about it. Let's start with Alitha East. From Alitha East, we have Jasmine Thomas, a junior, wave, who won the state championship in both the 100-meter dash with a time of 12.24 and the 200-meter dash with a time of 26.64. Kelsey Queering, also a junior, who won the 800-meter run with a time of 2 minutes and 21.47 seconds. And the 4x400-meter relay team of Kyle Evans, Nick Henricks, Brexton Love, and Parker Evans, all juniors. They won the 4x400-meter relay with a time of 3 minutes and 22.9 seconds. And last, from Alitha East, and certainly not least, Kayla Neal, a junior, who won the triple jump with a distance of 46 feet and 11.75 inches. Congratulations to Alitha East. From Alitha North, Kaixin was unable to make it tonight, unless he snuck in on me. A junior who won the high jump with a height of 6 feet 8 inches, so we're very excited there. From Alitha Northwest, we have Cameron Geldner, a freshman, who won the 3200-meter run with a time of 11 minutes and 17.63 seconds. Cameron, did you wave so they all saw you? There she is. There she is. Congratulations, Cameron, that's awesome. From Alitha South, we have Tanner Green, who I also think could not be here this evening, but let's recognize a sophomore who won the 200-meter dash with a time of 22.4. The 4x100-meter relay team of Aaron Thacker, Dresden Wilbur, Tanner Green, and Chris Coleman with a time of 42 minutes and 11 seconds. And Brayden Smith.
42 seconds. Seconds.
The rear of the 4x100, no. I'm going to do that again, with a time of four minutes?
42 seconds.
You should see what it says here. By our district athletic director, so we'll visit later. In an incredible time, a huge hand to that team. And very quickly, Brayden Smith, who couldn't be here tonight, a junior who won both the shot put, and I hope this is correct, with the distance of 57 feet and 3.1 inches, and the discus with the distance of 188 feet even. I got that one right? And awesome. Alitha South, congratulations to you guys. Let's congratulate all of these athletes in track and field, and then also recognize some family and fans that I know are in the audience, and some are already standing up. Big smile. Individual student certificates, coaches are going to give those to you. They're out by the front desk, so don't leave without those, and a huge congratulations. And Board of Education, that concludes our recognitions for tonight.
At this time, we'd like to do a special recognition for Rita Ashley. Tonight is her last regular board meeting. Rita, would you join me up here, please?
Of course.
Are there any more surprises?
A lot's happened. Everybody wave to Anna. This is Rita's granddaughter, Anna, and I think the real reason that she's leaving us. us. A lot has happened in Olathe in the past eight years, and serving as a member of this board has certainly kept Rita Ashley on her toes. We've added a few students, we've hired a few superintendents, we've opened a few buildings, we've sold a few bonds. Rita's tenure on the school board has seen a period of continued increases in student achievement, despite the challenges that come with changing demographics and mammoth budget cuts. And Rita, I hope that's something that you're incredibly proud of.
Sure.
You've served with professionalism and dedication. You're a consummate networker, and I'm amazed at the work you've done on behalf of the district, forging relationships with other school districts and with the business community. You've never hesitated to speak your mind or stand your ground on the issues that are important to you, and you've always been a champion for our music and our fine arts programs. We know your life won't be the same without the long hours spent preparing for meetings, the phone calls and the emails from concerned parents, or maybe the drives to Topeka for KASB activities, but we hope you'll think of us every once in a while, perhaps when you're enjoying a concert at the Kaufman, or an evening at a jazz club with friends, or maybe on one of your long walks with Anna. We're gonna miss you, Rita, very much, and on behalf of all the board, I'd like to thank you for your service to our district and for this entire community.
You're welcome.
As we recognize Rita tonight for her service on the Olathe Board of Education, we don't wanna make it "this is your life" kind of program, but as individual board members, you do bring your personal life and experiences to the whole group. Rita has shared in the past about her small district experience, growing up in north-central Kansas. Her hometown district was not a story of enrollment growth and boundary changes, as she has shared with us, that the same 17 kids went in her class all through school. Everyone knew each other. But Rita has very much been a part of our very large district for the past eight years. I, of course, personally love the story that Rita has received her own education at the University of Kansas and is a proud Jayhawk. Some may not realize that Rita started out to be a teacher before moving into the world of finance and banking. Rita was first elected to the Board of Education in the spring of 2006 and took her seat for the first board meeting on July 5, 2006. Tonight is her 175th board meeting. It didn't take... That really hits pretty hard, doesn't it? It didn't take Rita long to get involved either. As she was appointed the KASB Governmental Relations Contact the very first month, I think she's enjoyed the legislative and association work from her board seat during her tenure. As a board member of eight years, she's been involved in the growth and excellence of our school district. She's been on the board to open nine buildings. She was a part of the 6-9 reconfiguration of grades for our district. She was on the board when we began televising our meetings. She was on the board when the Mill Creek Bond Task Force was formed, and she was on the board for the '07, '08, and 2013 bond issues. She was involved in the action as part of the AVID program. She made the motion to begin a limited elementary international language pilot. So as you can tell, she's been a very active, very dedicated board member, serving on many KASB committees and boards, as well as many district committees. Whether it's been communications, finance, construction, or any other committee, Rita has been informed and insightful in her contribution. One or two Thursday nights a month for the past eight years, Rita has made the Olathe School District and the Board of Education her focus in work, and we are truly grateful the contributions that you've made to the work of preparing our students for the future. And for that, Rita, we thank you.
Well, thank you for the recognition. It's been quite a ride, and when I think back on it, and I said to someone outside, I said, "I don't know how you begin to describe this experience," and I assume that the rest of the board members will kind of feel the same way when and if they decide to leave the board. But I sort of came around to a couple of words that really seem appropriate, and those are, "it's been gratifying," and "it's been worthwhile." And I wanna thank the staff of the school district. You've all been wonderful, from the top down to, you know, everybody who's in the schools doing all the things that they do. Everybody's been wonderful and supportive. I appreciate people coming up to me when I'm out in the community, people I don't know in the school district will say, "Oh, it's so good to see you, Mrs. Ashley. I teach at such and such a school in this grade," and I really do appreciate that kind of feedback. I thank the people in the community who supported me when I have been elected, and I also thank the people who disagreed with me, and disagreed with the board, because it's good for us to hear other opinions and other points of view. It helps us make better decisions. I wanna thank my fellow board members. You guys have been a terrific group to work with. The diversity on the board makes us stronger, helps us make better decisions, and I have every bit of confidence that they're gonna continue to provide great leadership for the district, and I know that they will mentor my successor Brent McCune and will be an awesome school district. There are some things that really are kind of significant for me, and you're probably gonna say, "Well, gee, when I get done, you've forgotten this and you've forgotten that." But one of the things that's really stood out for me the last few years is being connected to site councils in the school district. And I really am so happy that we implemented that program, and regret that maybe I didn't attend as many meetings as I had intended to, but I tried to get to all the schools I was connected to at least once during the year. But it's been so beneficial to connect with the leadership in those schools, to connect with the people who are on those site councils, to learn about the issues, to learn about the concerns, to learn about the successes that are going on in different parts of the school district, and I think we bring those back to the board then when we make those decisions. I really like the idea that we've organized committees, and we've got board members sitting on committees, and they can kind of study in depth, though, of the issues that are going on, and bring those back to the rest of the board, just as Mr. Parker did tonight in regard to insurance. I like the way we've expanded our communications in the district, sending out hard copy newsletters. I know this is the age of electronics and social media, but there's still a certain contingent out there that appreciates those hard copies, and so I'm glad that we're doing that. I'm excited at the possibility of a fifth high school. I know that's not for sure yet, and we're gonna know, what is it, a week from, or no, we know Tuesday, whether that's going to succeed, but that's really pretty exciting because there's a great need for us, and I'm really sort of glad I'm not gonna have to make the boundary decisions for that. Of course, I was a great supporter for the reconfiguration. I believed in that from the day that we started that initiative, and I'm so pleased that we've been able to implement that. I think it's been good for our school district, and as Mrs. Martin mentioned, been a great supporter of the arts, and I'm really glad that we've been able to implement a program so we can repair instruments and keep more of our students involved in the classroom. And gosh, with our enrollment up 30-plus percent in music programs, that's really a testimonial to how important those are. So, last of all, I don't wanna embarrass him, but I do wanna say thank you to Dr. Barry. He is very responsive to board members. He's been a great superintendent to work with, and he's a great leader for this district, and I know that you'll continue to do great things. I guess in parting, I would just comment on one of these speeches that a senior gave at Olathe Northwest two years ago, and the theme of her whole presentation was, "Are we there yet?" And the idea was that, gee, don't forget about the journey and the experiences that you have, getting so focused on the goal that you don't recognize what is going on in between and the experiences that you have that you can learn from. And I think that kind of describes the Olathe School District, because we don't know where this is going. We just continue to have growth, and we come up with new ideas and do bigger and better things for the school district, and I think that so describes us, and asking that question, "Are we there yet?" And the answer is, "No." So just continue to do all the good things that you're doing. I am immensely proud of this district, and I'm so proud to have served on the Board of Education. Thank you.
As part of recognizing Rita tonight, I wanna mention that I've always been sensitive to the fact that former board members just drop off of our team. It sounds like a punchline to a really bad joke, what happens to board members when they leave? Board members certainly have their memories and their stories from their time on the board, and their actions are recorded in board minutes forever, but I don't want their names and work to ever be forgotten. The Olathe School District has a rich legacy of wonderful board members, and so tonight we are unveiling a framed document that will hang right outside this boardroom that contains the names of all board members and their years of service back to the consolidation of our district.
Interesting.
I've done this in a previous district and found that people enjoyed looking at the names when they come in. They would notice names of people that they know, that they go to church with, that maybe live down the street, and they'll say, "I never knew that you were on the Board of Education." So in recognition tonight of Rita's service and the service of all former board members in the Olathe Public School District, I'm pleased to provide this permanent recording that will hang outside the main door of this boardroom.
That's great. Thank you. Yeah.
Very nice.
Thank you. I made a terrible oversight. My son Brad is in the back of the room, and his wife Nicole, my granddaughter Anna, came this evening. It was a surprise to me. Brad's a 1998 graduate of Olathe North High School. My other son Stuart was not able to be here. He's a 2001 graduate of Olathe North High School. So, thank you, Brad.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotaped recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name. Ms. Hibbs, I don't believe anyone has signed up, but if there's anyone who would care to make public comment, we'd like to hear you. Okay, seeing none, we will move along, and we will hop back in our agenda at 6.09. That is the ground lease with the Miracle League of Olathe for adaptive baseball field at the College Boulevard Activity Complex. Are there any questions or comments from board members?
Well, the only comment I'd like to make, again, is in recognition of the Olathe Medical Center and the support that they give to the school district, and in this case, $125,000 that they are pledging towards this. Again, this is one of the, one of the community, one of the public little area, or businesses here in the Kansas City area, specifically here in Olathe, and you've all heard me talk before about how important it is to recognize and also support our local businesses that actually support us back with taxpaying money and things such as that. So I do wanna just recognize that, because that's quite a contribution, $125,000, to help with this miracle network area.
All right, then, would someone...
I just had a question in regard to why there isn't a renewal option in the lease agreement. It runs for a 10-year term, but there wasn't any renewal option. I know legal counsel has reviewed and put their stamp of approval on this. Was there any conversation about that?
Again, with the attorney drawing it up, I'm not sure why, it was just a single 10 years.
I feel bad, you're catching me off guard a little bit, because I think it's not at that, but there is an opportunity, I thought, when you reviewed it, you saw nothing, because I thought there's somewhere else about the opportunity to renew.
Okay. Under the initial part of the lease, I didn't see it, but that would be something that could happen.
The question had come up in terms of our other agreements, too, because this agreement then leads to the construction agreement with the Calhoun Senior Foundation, and then the operation agreement with Olathe Parks in Iraq. So I knew the question had come up, and I know Mike Norris had gone back in and showed me where it was renewable, but the term of this initial was the 10-year, then renewable by mutual agreement. I can double-check at some point. Are you seeing it, Ms. Hibbs? Good. I thought it was there.
Continues for 10 years, at which time the lease shall terminate unless extended in writing by mutual agreement of the parties.
Well, yes, it is, but there's no specific term indicated for the renewal, it just said it could be renewed, and that was the question I had. Okay, great, thank you.
Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move to approve the ground lease between Unified School District Number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, and Miracle League of Olathe Incorporated as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Dr. Daniels. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6.10, we have a proposal for the sale of Mill Creek Center. Comments or questions?
Dr. Barry, could you remind the board and viewers in our audience what the most recent appraisal was for that building?
As you know, we've talked about Mill Creek for quite some time, and again, it was a task force that was ahead of the '07 bond issue that made the study that said we should build a new advanced technical center, which is what we're calling it, that will open this fall. But at that time, and we had some negotiations with a number of people that were interested, and at one time, we thought there might be a land swap and so forth, just to remind you of that. And at that time, we had an appraisal done, and there were a couple different pieces of that, because part of it determined, well, if you're gonna demolish part of it, do we take that out of the value? But to answer your question, Dr. Daniels, as I recall, that the last appraised value we had was between 1.1 and 1.2 million dollars.
Thank you.
I wanna make a comment about this proposal, because it was really a nice proposal that was brought to us, and I think it's one that had a lot of thought put into it, a lot of energy, a lot of community focus. I think the attempt was gonna be to do so much more out of this building in terms of just a simple purchase, and several things were happening, but so there were a lot of components to it, and we, again, were probably cheering on the side for it as it was coming forth, but at this point, from staff analysis of this, we are recommending that it not be approved.
And if we don't approve this, we have a use for the building?
Yes, as we have not had any other offers, you know, coming through, and as our needs continue to come up with our growth, we are actually slipping in, back in on the west side to have our step-up program, which was formerly run by Green Bush, and we're taking that back over. And so, again, that's a part of the building that heating and cooling work in it, very minimal work. We're gonna be back in and starting up school for our, again, community program that has previously been located at Center of Grace, so the location in town is very similar. And again, we're excited about moving in and having that space for now.
The listing agreement is still in force?
It is.
With the CBRE?
It is. So anything that we would negotiate, if we had another offer come, we would have to negotiate ours, continued use of, or parts of the building, or when something might go into effect, but for now, we're gonna use it.
And did we have a one-year listing agreement with them?
I'm looking to Merle or John, I don't remember.
Sound right? Close? And how far into that listing agreement are we? So, okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Then I would entertain a motion.
I move that we not accept the commercial real estate sales contract dated April 26, 2013, for the sale of the Mill Creek Center property.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Ms. Ashley and a second by Mr. Parker. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
The motion carries. Onto our other action items. 7.01, approval of the Kansas Association of School Boards and the National School Boards Association fees for 2013 and 14. Are there comments or questions? Then I would entertain a motion.
Madam President, I would move to continue the membership affiliations with Kansas Association of School Boards, the KASB Legal Assistance Fund, and the National School Boards Association National Affiliate Program for the period of 7/1/13 through 6/30/14 as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Mr. Parker and a second by Ms. Ashley. Would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
No.
The motion carries. 7.02, our transportation safety variance areas for the next school year. Comments or questions? Comments or questions? Then I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the cost increase to run buses in our safety variance areas for 2013 to 2014.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Dr. Daniels. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
The motion carries. 7.03, our Masterworks concert request for a scheduling variance. Comments or questions? Then a motion?
I move to approve requested variance to hold Masterworks concert on Sunday, September 29, 2013, at 3 o'clock PM at Yardley Hall on the Johnson County Community College Campus as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Mr. Poland and a second by Ms. Ashley. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
The motion carries. 7.04 would be an appointment to fill the remainder of Ms. Ashley's terms on the Kansas Association of School Boards Region 15 Vice President position. I have expressed an interest in fulfilling that role. Are there any other board members?
I think it would be great fun to nominate Mrs. Felter in her absence. But I won't do that and so I would support your self-nomination, Amy.
I move that nominations cease.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, we have a motion by Ms. Ashley and a second by Mr. Parker. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
The motion carries. Now we need a motion for the actual appointment.
I move to appoint Amy Martin to serve as Region 15 Vice President on the Kansas Association of School Boards Board of Directors for the remainder of my three-year term effective July 1, 2013, through October 2014.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Ms. Ashley and a second by Dr. Daniels. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Madam President, I would move to approve 7.05 approval student trip Future Business Leaders of America annime on June 27, 30 of 13 and also 7.06, the student trip debate and forensics from Olathe North, Olathe Northwest to Birmingham, June 15, 2013.
Second.
Would you second both of those motions, Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Would board members like to vote on those together?
Yes.
All right.
Ms. Hibbs, we'll be voting on two motions. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Very efficient work, Mr. Parker. Under future action items, we have our Head Start Program location change and transportation work plan, a copy paper bid, a calculator bid, and a couple of student trips. Are there any comments or questions on those items?
Can you speak a little bit about the change of the location for the Head Start Program? Dr. Berry? It is a consortium in terms of we can take in other, school districts can be a part of that Head Start. The, just to share, Gardner's had a site in the past. Again, as the big picture of the program looks at enrollment, the number of kids served and ability to have those programs, it has been decided that it can be better served by having the site here in Olathe, another site for us. We have students who are on a waiting list who will now be able to be served. The students in Gardner will still have access to this program. It'll just have to be a transportation. But again, due to enrollment really dropping and the ability to hang on to that program, someone has wondered, why did we have separate programs anyway? Well, with Head Start, if you have separate programs, you become in competition with each other and so many times you'll have a group go together in an area like this so that it's a common cause and common budget that you can work through.
So we'll bring on additional students with those additional dollars into our existing program.
And, go ahead, Dr. Berry. We'll have additional students that will be able to be served.
We'll serve probably additional Olathe students, but we are still capped the same number for our grant application. So it won't be any additional students. It may be additional Olathe students, but the total number of students will not change.
Okay.
We're still capped in the grant application while we may want to serve additional students.
Well, those students, they could be Gardner's students, but they may also be Olathe students.
They may also be Olathe students, the biggest waiting list is Olathe students.
I remember there were like 80 some, was there, the waiting list was pretty high.
The waiting list is higher than we certainly like it to be, yes.
The Board has received several written information items, construction change orders, our school site council report, some options for alternative high school graduation sites, and our Head Start Monthly Director's Report. I know that the Board has received some communication about graduation sites. Do board members have any comments that they would like to make?
I think this is a really tough decision.
And you're glad that you won't be here for it?
And I'm glad that I won't be here. I had a conversation just this week with a Blue Valley parent and this particular parent wasn't really excited about going to Kemper Arena. She said, "My gosh, my kid was just a pin dot down there on the stage and we were way up in the rafters." And she said, "I would just as soon have been crammed in the bleachers somewhere as to be stuck way up in the rafters." So that's, that's one opinion from a parent who's experienced it. Somebody else might want to elaborate on the email that we received from another parent.
Well, I look at all of these options and quite honestly, I don't think any of them are good options, just like continuing the way that we do it now is really not the best option we have. But we did receive an email from a parent and I've heard from friends whose students are athletes and that weekend coincides with a lot of state competitions. And if we start changing the date and the times, it will make it virtually impossible for some of our students to attend their own graduation. And to me, as much as I would like my family to attend when my kids graduate, I think it's more important the child attends when they graduate. And so that weighs very heavily on my decision and I don't look forward to making this decision.
Well, I think, I think Mr. Parker and I have been here long enough that we could probably recite all of these options from memory and we've agonized over this multiple times and there is such not a good solution that it always comes back to doing it at the high school. And I'm having a hard time thinking about it being anyplace else. I understand and appreciate the work that's gone into this because we've done it several times now. You can probably recite it from memory as well. And I appreciate that and for every parent who wants to stay in their home school, there are going to be parents who are unhappy because there are not enough tickets for their family members to be there. And I'm respectful of that, but I'm having a hard time thinking about leaving our district for graduation.
I want to give some credit to Dr. Shirk for leading high school principals through this study and continued discussion. The high school principals struggle with it. They like it in their home gyms and auditoriums. They know that we will be giving some things up if we were to move to a large site. The only advantage to the large site is why, and why we consider it is because of the comments we hear about, "I can't bring everybody I want to." So that, that's the only thing that we would accomplish by doing is bringing everybody that you would want to because again, they seed an awful lot. We're also concerned as we continue to get bigger, right now, we were at, the lowest number of tickets was at Olathe North, four tickets per family, five at East, five at South, and six at Olathe Northwest. Again, then we also, as you know, we set up overflow areas. You can watch it in the auditorium or a flex theater or an alternate gym. So we try to do that as well. But the principals have also struggled, but they finally at least wanted to move forward and really be serious about some options. A few of the options are, as I've pointed out and Gretchen put in a report, level ground, so you wouldn't be able to be up to be able to see what's happening, let alone it be a pin dot if someone is that small. The options still available for us next year became limited as well because it just takes one or two schools to lock into something and we're out. The times that are offered to us are to rotate, you know, again, and cooperate with another school district and we could probably accommodate three of our four high schools that way next year. Olathe Northwest would be content to still do theirs at home. The other option for us that's been suggested as well is going outside. The hesitation by our high school principals is not only weather, but right now, it is the fact that you are on a surface, a grass uneven surface that many times could be muddy or soggy, would make it very difficult to put up chairs and so forth. We fully understand if we go try to move outside that at a given time on that day, you have to make it an early decision, we're going to move it inside and then we immediately would be back to the ticket allocation system, which we could do. If, if we are successful with the bond issue and we have turf a year from now, I think the principals feel differently about that. So I think that's the latest thought as we will talk with principals again next week, I believe Tuesday, maybe we hang on for one more year and then look at maybe an outside as we continue to look at other options available to us in the area. But again, we're very interested in your comments tonight in terms of moving outside.
So with the artificial turf field, is that such that you could put chairs on it without damaging the turf?
Yes.
Is there not double the cost because wouldn't you have to set up outside? But if you're making a decision at 2:00 for a 6:00 ceremony, you obviously have to have a gym set up as well.
Ready to go, yes. You have to have a separate system ready. Again, with two complexes, obviously, we're going to have two graduations at each complex and so you have some savings by, you know, right now, we rent chairs for all of our schools and sound system maybe and things like that. So some sharing, but you're exactly right, to double set up, it's going to be some additional cost. It is obviously, as you saw in the proposal, additional cost to go to someplace like Kemper Arena.
Well, Dr. Berry, this is one board member that will never vote for an outside graduation.
Okay.
Just think, if we would have had it set up this year for an outside graduation, fortunately, the storm went north of us, but had it come through Olathe, all those chairs would be somewhere in Missouri.
Yeah. Again, you have to have it and make that call very early. There can be no, absolutely no chance. I mean, I fully understand, but there are schools that have outside graduation and on the right night, it's beautiful and very, you know, cool and so forth, but I fully understand, you just can't take a chance with the weather.
Right. It's just, just too much risk. I remember Dr. All, we had outside graduation in 1998 that got blown away and they moved it inside and Dr. All said she would never, ever have another outside graduation and I still remember that.
Yeah. We didn't call her, but she probably still has that opinion.
Well, this board member is biased by her experience, so she was terrified.
If we move to outside graduation though, we would still have to schedule two.
Two different days.
Right, yeah.
Two per day or on two separate days.
Again, that would be determined, but when you're set up, you, I would think you'd have two at each location on that day, so you're.
So would that impact some of our student athletes as well?
You know, it's possible, as we explored that a little bit, you know, the one good piece of news I can share with you that for the next two years, swimming and maybe another activity have been moved back one week and so if we're still on the same weekend, we don't have any conflicts, but that's not always the case maybe.
I know, I was at the Olathe East graduation this year and they had a student slip in right at the end because he, I think, came from a golf tournament.
Sure.
So if that graduation ceremony had been earlier in the day, it would have been a challenge for him.
Exactly.
When I was at North this year, I was talking to Mr. Moreford about outside graduation and he has an experience about one way.
Yes, yes.
About the same thing, when they were moving it from outside inside. And could you imagine how fast a Kansas thunderstorm comes up? They haven't even got everybody out of the stadium, outside stadium yet and it's pouring down rain with the wind blowing and a tornado warning.
Now, this year, we actually postponed graduation by a day. If we were renting a facility, what would our option be if we had to postpone by a day?
Yeah, really just depends, but when we're set up on a weekend, typically a first week night or so would be okay at the locations we've looked at, but it would have to be determined and some planning put into that. You're right.
Well, I know you want feedback from board members and along with Dr. Daniels. For the last 14 years, we have had this same discussion and for the last 14 years, I have come to the same conclusion, keeping an Olathe at the high schools.
You know, again, I think our principals.
I'll probably get a million emails though. But you know, when you look at all the other alternatives and there's like, Dr. Daniel says, there are just not any good optimal solution other than us building a really, really nice facility somewhere in Olathe where we could have our own graduation, build a Kemper Arena in Olathe and then we could have graduation there. But going off out of the city, I think is a disservice to our, to our families and to the kids and to the community.
As you saw in the proposal, if you move outside of the community, there are costs to make sure we have some buses for the orchestra group, the band that plays and so forth. Not to give Phil Clark up, but Phil Clark said we should dome one of our football stadiums and that would take care of it.
Well, it's not even just the chorus and the band that would be transporting. I mean, I think about my three sons and their, their probably unwillingness to drive with their boring parents and grandparents to graduation and wanting to drive on their own to Kemper. I mean, I think you, I just think there are lots of issues that, not that they couldn't have an accident driving to Olathe South, but fortunately, they did not. But you know, I just think there are additional issues that come up when you remove it to such a distance.
Another thing that I think we need to consider is project graduation because the way it stands right now, we capture those students right after graduation and whisk them away to a safe activity and it might be more of a challenge to get kids to participate in that.
It could be.
If there's a.
Like if their one group is graduating at 1:00 and, yeah.
Or the night before even, which is one of our options.
Well, I've always, always, I guess, been against having anything outside the high schools, but I've just sort of kept an open mind to it because we've done such a wonderful job researching it and thank you, Dr. Shirk also, for, you know, because it's great information. Anytime you have a big decision like this, you know, or every year, we hear from people. I would be interested to know, we always hear from the people that are dissatisfied, what percentage of the graduates do we actually hear from? I mean, are we hearing from a 5% group or are we hearing from 50% of the parents?
No, it's pretty, it's pretty minor, yeah.
So I mean, you know, while we want to appease everybody, naturally, the only ones you hear from are the ones that are unhappy usually. That means, you know, 90% of the people are satisfied with it. They may, you know, at least they're not voicing their opinion, that they're totally dissatisfied. So I, you know, with, I guess I would like the principals maybe in the future to log how many people actually complaints they've got to see how significant of a problem it is.
Yeah.
Because from, you know, unless it becomes significant, I don't see a reason to change myself.
Yeah, and again, I want to give credit to our principals who are on the front line and have to answer a lot of those questions and get hit up for tickets and I think they were really trying to respond to some additional requests from a number of sources that were saying, "When are you going to consider?" And, you know, "Go and do it like so-and-so does and go to a bigger place." So they were trying to respond and they were very open and Mike made a good point about open mind to change if we need to. So I think we'll go back and have some more conversation with principals, but I'm hearing concerns about double setup and outside graduation, concerns about going outside of our community. Let's see if we can continue and stay, stay at home.
Have we considered asking our students what their priorities are?
You know, that was something else somebody had shared, and my opinion, what really happens once we hit the night and everybody's happy and the students walked across the stage, we kind of forget about the lack of tickets sometimes. And I hate to say this, but sometimes even people share with me that certain family members are glad they don't have to go sit on a gymnasium bleacher. They still get to be a part of it. They get to go to dinner. They get to go to the party. They're there celebrating as a family. There's also been talk, you know, can we stream something? Can we give others more options even? That it could be at home, that you could get a computer, and again, feel like you're a part of it. Because as one of you mentioned, if we go to Kemper Arena and you're seeing a tiny little ant down there, it might be better to do something electronically even. So it sounds like we will talk some more, but we're not in a hurry to go.
Well, Dr. Barry, it sounds like we have a lot of questions. Do you anticipate bringing us something?
I wanted to bring you discussion tonight. I did not want to put you in a position to say, "Let's vote up or down." We need to continue to talk.
But can we expect to be voting up or down at some point?
I think it would be if we were to bring a recommendation to do something different. Would not bring it back to you to say we're going to stay in our gyms. I think it would only be if we really want to move forward. That be okay?
Thank you.
Would you let us know when you're going to do that, and I'll plan my vacation.
You can come with me.
Okay.
You know, and Dr. Daniels, I appreciate it, but Mr. Polan brings up a good point, you know. I want, we want to be sensitive to everyone, and so, but where's the really concern here? And I agree with him, you know, I think far and away, many, many of, the biggest majority of our parents appreciate being in the community, close to home, in their own schools. And I know our business community appreciates it because then, when they go to graduation, they patronize local businesses, and they're not going somewhere else for their dinners and their parties. So there's a lot of pluses for keeping it the way it is. I understand there's some negatives, but when you weigh it out, I think the pluses outweigh, well, far outweigh the negatives. And the negative is just the number of tickets. That's it. Not that that's not inconsequential, not that that's not important, but when you look at all the positives versus the negative, I think, to me, it becomes pretty clear that staying home is a best option.
Thank you, everyone. Are there any additional topics that board members would like to bring for discussion? Okay, Dr. Barry, what do you have for us?
Yeah, just a few comments. This is our first board meeting since we completed the school year, and so I want to say thanks to everybody officially, from the Board of Education to District Administration to Building Administration, teaching staff, support staff, bus drivers, cafeteria personnel, and so forth, for a really, really fine school year of educating, preparing more than 29,000 students. So again, a public thank you to our entire staff for a good school year. Also want to say a thank you to a lot of people, but we had a very successful summer conference again, over 1,400 educators, wonderful national and local presenters. A special thanks to Jan Hein in her office, Teaching and Learning, Dr. Banikowski, Luanne Hermrich, and countless others that really put on a top-notch summer conference. Really neat, so that's great. A couple other just quick things I want to share with you. We got a report today, or I did a printout from the State Department. Last year during the legislative session, there was Senate Bill 155 that the governor wanted to put some money into vocational certification, and for every student that got certified, the district would get $1,000. That helps us pay for the testing and some of the materials that go with that. I got the list from across the state, and we had 52 students from the Olathe District that received that certification in some form in many areas. That's 25% more than any other district in the state. So again, whether it's a Hutchinson Vocational School or Wichita or whoever it was, we by far are getting kids through that certification process, so that's wonderful. Want to mention the project, excuse me, at 127th Street.
That one choked you up.
Construction and street construction always does that. As you know, they are heavy into it on 127th Street, but the very first section that will be coming from Black Bob to the entrance of Olathe East High School will be completed by August of 2013. That's critical to us, obviously. The next section, the next little part that goes on east to Greenwood, will be completed by the end of 2013, so sometime late fall. And then finally, the rest of the work all the way east will be late fall 2014. So those are the dates that I have, but thank goodness, we're going to be able to get into our school by August of this year. Want to mention again, just a couple more things. Legislature wrapped up their session and have gone home, and the really good news for us is that we have a tax bill and we have a budget. And so now, things are going to start to happen for us as a school district. The budget workshops are being scheduled, and John and staff will attend those. We'll get ready to finalize a budget and bring it to you in July, and then certification in August. But the highlight for us, obviously, is that we needed to have a tax bill and a budget. There is an advocacy meeting set for next Wednesday night, the 12th. We once again are hosting that from KASB. Would ask that you can attend if possible. There's a light dinner. It's open to the area. School districts get information, and other districts can come and attend. KASB staff wants to sit down and talk about the next session, the next platform in terms of legislative positions, and so that will be the focus for this group. And then, of course, I need to mention the bond issue that we are currently pending right now. The last official count that I think we got yesterday, almost 21,000 ballots have been cast. That's pretty close to on par with what happened in 2007, which was our last mail-in ballot. If people did not get a ballot, we found out you can still go to the election office. You can sign a form that says you never received one or didn't receive it and don't have it, and you can actually vote right then and still have it count, so that's an option for them. Otherwise, it's getting down to the wire if someone's going to mail it because it has to be received by noon next Tuesday. We should have notification one way or the other by 5:00 PM next Tuesday. So of course, we will let you know. And those will be my comments tonight.
Thank you. We will need an executive session this evening. Dr. Barry, I believe we need about an hour. Do you have anything that you would like to add to that?
Yeah, we need about 30 minutes, 25 to 30 minutes.
So that puts us late.
I want to make Rita's last regular board meeting going out with a bang.
Yeah, thank you very much.
No problem.
All right. Would someone care to make a motion?
I'd move that the board adjourned executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel, to discuss matters relating to employer-employee negotiations, and for the preliminary discussion relating to the acquisition of real property, and that the board return to the regular meeting at, what, 9:45?
Yes, please.
In this room, the executive session is required in order to provide the privacy, protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, to protect the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest, and to protect the district's financial interest and bargaining position.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Mr. Polan and a second by Mr. Parker. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.